Good evening. Today, we are having the Design Review Commission. This is our special meeting. This is Monday, May 27, 2025, and I'm calling the meeting to order at 6:29. Our first order of business is our pledge allegiance and Commissioner Chen.
Thank you, please rise. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, where each is set, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you. Will you please do roll call, Damian?
Commissioner Chen?
Present.
Thank you. Commissioner Tu?
Present.
Thank you. Vice Chair Seilu and Commissioner Lopez are absent. Chair Romo?
Present.
Thank you.
Thank you. Tonight's meeting is being livestreamed on Cable Channel 3 and on our other online platforms. To prevent any overlap in comments, each commissioner will be called upon to speak. Item number one, public comment. This time is set aside for members of the public to address the Design Review Commission on items of interest that are not on the agenda but are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the commission. Persuaded to the Brown Act, the Design Review Commission cannot answer any questions or take any action until such time as the matter may appear as an item on a future agenda. If you wish to address the Design Review Commission, please fill out a card that is available at the back table. Once completed, kindly submitted to our recording secretary. Speakers will be called upon to the podium one by one. Each speaker will be given up to three minutes to speak. Do we have any public comment?
No public comment at this time, Madam Chair.
All right, thank you. Item number two, consent calendar, there's none, so we will go directly to item number three, our public hearing.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair and members of the Design Review Commission. There are three public hearing items this evening. Copies of the agenda and the staff report for tonight's hearing are available on the city's website at www.sangabrilcity.com and also on the table that is by the entrance. Anyone wishing to speak on an item this evening and are not the project applicant, please fill out a speaker card and submit the card to the recording secretary. And speaker cards are also available on the back table. Please write down the item number that you would like to speak on, and speakers, as mentioned, will be called up one by one to the podium during the public hearing portion of each item. And as mentioned, each speaker will be given up to three minutes to speak. For each item this evening, staff will provide a brief summary of the staff report, followed by a presentation or comments from the applicant, and then the public hearing portion will be open. And after public comments, the applicant is provided the opportunity to rebut if they choose, and prior to the close of the public hearing, the commission may ask questions of the applicant's staff or the city architect. However, once the public hearing is closed, the opportunity for public comment has ended. With that, staff is ready to provide a summary of item A.
Thank you. Item A is 225 East Valley Boulevard Planning Case Number PPD 25003. Precise Plan of Design, Time Extension. Applicant Zhen Tao Yi.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair and members of the commission. As mentioned, the item before the Design Review Commission this evening is a request for a time extension, so this is a unique application before the commission. It's not a new approval for the project, but a request to extend the time of the approval. And the request by the applicant is for two years, to expire in 2027. Again, this is for the project that is located at 205 East Valley Boulevard, and the current, the time extension application case number is PPD 25-003, but this is for case PPD 21-005, which was approved two years ago. And just a quick overview of the project again, just to refresh the commission. The slide here shows the project site. It's comprised of two parcels on the northwest corner of East Valley Boulevard and Palm Avenue. The lot included a lotline adjustment, which was processed in 2022. The combined lot area is approximately 30,000 square feet, just a little bit under an acre in size, and it is currently vacant. The property is located in the mixed-use transit-oriented development zone within the Valley Boulevard specific plan area, and the land use is commercial-specific plan. And this is a quick summary of the development standards. The project is designed within the allowed development standards of the zone, within the specific plan area, as well as the required parking spaces. And here again, it's just a general site plan overview. It's an L-shaped layout with commercial use on the ground floor, followed by residential use on the top, some on-grade parking, as well as subterranean parking. And here's a rendering of the project. Again, this was the approval in 2023. No changes are proposed to the project design or layout or any of the development standards associated with this project. Again, this was the approval two years ago, and the project continues to be consistent with the general plan as part of this time extension request, as well as the Valley Boulevard objectives and the goals of the specific plan area. The project was reviewed for environmental, the California Environmental Quality Act sequel requirements back in 2023. That was a part of the Design Review Board's approval. Along with that came mitigation measures associated with the project, and with it, a mitigation monitoring and reporting program was approved. And since no changes, as mentioned, are proposed as part of this time extension request, then no additional environmental review was required for this application. Public notification was mailed to surrounding properties, as well as posted at City Hall, the Post Office, Public Library, and published in the San Gabriel Sun on May 15, 2025. And the approval before the commission this evening, as mentioned, is to adopt the attached resolution, oops, of the Design Review Commission. The City of San Gabriel, California approving Planning Case Number PPD 25-005 for a two-year time extension for precise plan of design PPD 21-005 for a four-story mixed-use development project at 205 East Valley Boulevard. Again, subject to the resolution. And this concludes staff's presentation. The developer is available this evening for questions.
Thank you very much.
Commissioner Tu, do you have any clarifying questions for staff?
My speakerphone is not working, but I guess...
Did you, it's not red, is it?
So the clarifying question I have for this staff is that the two-year extension was for the design review extension. Has the applicant submitted for the building and safety plan check?
They have. They're currently in the review process, and they can provide a little bit more information as to the timing of that submittal and also timing for any further work on the project.
Okay, would that be like concurrent extension for the building and safety plan check as well?
No, so this is only for the commission's approval, and the plan check would be subject to building and safety code timelines.
Okay, thank you.
There you go.
Thank you so much.
Along the same line, does the planning commission has to approve this two-year extension also?
There was a tentative map associated with this project, and that is subject to extension applications that are associated with the map under the planning commission.
I see. So it'll be concurrent then. Basically, the extension will ride on both DRC and also planning commission for two years.
The request and the approval this evening would apply to the PPD, and any extension request for the subdivision map would be processed separately.
Okay. One last question is that usually we grant one year. This one, I think they're being realistic and trying to have for two years. If come two years, 2027, and they're still not ready, what do we do then? Because I think what happened is that they may be after, from 2023 to 2027, usually following a different co-period and provision period. So maybe we can ask the applicant, are they serious about two years extension?
Yes, but in response to that, at that point, it would be considered an expired project, and it would have to come back for a new approval.
The applicant understands that, right? Okay, it's important that they understand that. All right, good. Thank you.
Wonderful questions, and you covered mine, Raymond, so thank you very much.
And the applicant is here?
Yeah, good evening, committee members. My name is Xin Tao Yi, the project manager, and thank you for your time in reviewing our application. Eighty years ago, we bought this land, and also at the same time, we developed the Sheraton Hotel. Yeah, the reason why we want to develop this land because it's face to the entrance of the hotel, so we really want to improve the street and have the good facade. On June 2023, our process design got approved, and over the past year, we completed about 90% construction document. So the process, we did very good coordination with U T D company, like Edison, also did very good coordination with various city department. The design is what is submitted for the plan check, but based on the city's requirement. Once we submitted and get approval, we have to prove permit and start construction with a set time, and we do also prefer not to drag out the project with the long-term construction, which will impact our neighbor and also not good for the city. So we are submitting the extension request today because we are facing some challenge with the project funding and the cash flow now. And moving forward too quickly under this timeline would put a lot of pressure on the project and increase risk for the company. Since 2023, the interest rate has been raised very high, and the number what we just got in one month later, one month before, the interest is almost 8.5 to 9%, and it's made it tough to get the financial for the project so alone and aid to the overall difficult financing in the project. So, and also this project is apartment project, is for long-term rental, not for selling, so, which is means we cannot very quickly get the return by selling the unit. That is means the cash flow for the rental is really very important for this project. And with a high-interesting loan, we have estimated that the project won't have the positive cash flow for the next, yeah, almost 10 years. So, which is make the risk for the investment. Over the next year, we will keeping, taking step to improve our cash flow and also looking for some better financial option to support the project. We also talking with some potential partner now and to see if we can bring some new funding, and even that is means a joint venture. At the same time, we also will start the full review of the design with our design team to see whether we can do some like the value engineering to lower the cost. That is work we will probably will start, you know, one month later. And we know everyone, like designer and city staff and owner, has already put a lot of time and effort into the project. We truly appreciate all the support so far and hope to find a way forward that honor everyone's hard work. We are still fully commit to making this project happen and believe with the right finishing, the value engineering, we can do the successfully. And thank you very much for the continued support and understand as we're working so the important step. Yeah, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yeah, and also today we have architecture during the meeting, so if you have any questions want to ask design team, we also have architect here. Yeah, thank you.
Before you sit down, we'd like to see if we have any clarified questions for you. Commissioner Tu?
Yes, I have a question about the current stage, current status of the property. So it appears to be it's vacant, and then it's been fenced up?
Yeah, the current property is already fenced up, and, and yeah, some, are you talking about the using for now, or?
Yeah, I was wondering, I mean, since you're asking for two years extensions, I was wondering what will be, like, how the property will look like in these two years? And it has that be like fenced up to have like a good appearance to the, to the street? Or have you thought about using it as parking for the hotels somehow?
Yeah.
So I was wondering the usage of the property during vacancy?
Yeah, it's fenced up now, and also sometimes, yeah, if I have some event for the hotel, we are open for the parking. Yeah, and, yeah, the hotel team, we have some persons go there, everyone to do the clean and the checkout for the safety, and also for the, give some the trash away, yeah, we cleaned every month.
Okay, yeah, that's my question. Just want to make sure the site is clean and safe for the, for the neighborhood, and also I guess it's a good idea to actually utilize for the hotel for parking. I don't know if that's something the applicant have to go through city to achieve that. Thank you.
Commissioner Chen?
Thank you, Chair. I guess you heard earlier that it is critical about this next two years. With your architect, I want to find out where are we on plan check process? When do you think the permit will be ready based on today's plan check schedule? And it is intelligent to ask for two year rather than one year, because one year come by really fast, and if you're not ready, then you have to come back here again. But granted, the two years, mind you, that will be like four year from the day of approval, code change, city master plan may change, use may change, and the whole atmosphere will change drastically. As you heard earlier, the project may be void at that time. I just want to make sure your ownership understand the importance of that, that particularly when you said that these are useful rental, which is probably the most safest investment strategy now than selling as condos. You, your partnership and your ownership should understand what they're getting into in the beginning. The city as a whole is counting a lot on the success of the project. It's important, being in a very prominent part of the town along the commercial corridor of Valley Boulevard. So we don't want to see the project fail. We don't want you to, to consider, well, let us do engineering, value engineering and try to make it cheaper. We gone through a lot in the beginning to get the project approved, and your ownership should understand that we expect the project to be done well, successful, and profitable, so that we can both win. So it's critical that they understand that parameter when we vote on the extension. Don't try to chip in the project and make it a project that is not successful.
Yeah, the value engineering, you know, we will guarantee that we won't lower the quality of the project. And also what we are studying is from the M E P system to compare with different system, whether can, you know, at same quality and the same purpose for the, for the design, whether can be the some, you know, cost different. So based on that, and we will have the design team to do some study to see, you know, how we can achieve that.
Sure, that's understandable. You're probably better off just to bring in your, your major partners, that from the builder's side, your M E P subcontractors on a large project, you bring them in early, let them look at the entire design system and work together on a design-built type of arrangement, so you understand your cost at the end.
Yeah.
Much better than get started and then get the cheapest bid, change order never end. It's, there are many ways to skin the cat. Your architect is a very qualified person. So in answering my question number one, when do we expect the permit to be out? End of this year, or a few months away, or where are we?
Probably young.
Mr. Cao?
Yeah. The plans, the plans were submitted quite a while ago, but the owner, at this point, is holding up the plan check fee, so it has not been processed in reality.
So, okay.
The, the plan is, since next year, January 1st next year, we will go into the new co-edition. So it's almost inevitable now that we will go through some sort of revision. But before we get into that mode, the owner wants to bring in contractors to look at closely the cost of each tray and try to see whether there's any area that we can reduce the cost before we start updating the code.
You need to explain to him about the plan check fee. I mean, if you want to move the project forward without paying the fee, nothing is going to happen, and the plan just sit at the counter doing nothing, you know, you know that better than anybody else. The, if they are concerned with the total out-of-pocket cost on the development cost for the entire building, I would suggest you bring in the major subs, even bring in the builder in the beginning if you can, and try to price out the whole thing openly, so that they would understand what they're getting into, knowing that if they're not going to make it, then you need to make the right decision. Because if he is worried about paying plan check fee, which is the least amount of money need to be out of pocket, the remaining cost will be a lot more. So they need to understand that.
Yes, I think the withholding the plan check fee at this more, at this point, is not solely the amount, which is 300 some, some thousand dollars, but rather try not to get the plan check going, and then we revise the plan later.
Yeah, you may want to work with building department and find out how the schedule works out, and whether, have you paid any plan check fee at all? Is it in the process?
Not yet.
So you just submit the plan, no, no plan check fee?
Yes.
Okay, well, then, then based on tonight's action, whatever that comes out, if there is an extension on your land entitlement permit, then, then they really need to spend time, sit down and work it out, because I don't want to see you back two year from now, and then the project is there. It just is not good. Especially, I think Commissioner Tu asked a question about having a sort of a semi-fence project that looks kind of dilapidated along the side with Sheraton Hotel and Hilton Hotel along your neighbor. It's not good. So it doesn't help the city per se, so.
Exactly.
They need to take something very serious about how they're going to maintain the prop, the property during the time of plan check and waiting, and make some hard decision on whether the project is going to go or not go.
Exactly, and, and those points are well taken. I think the owner probably would, would talk to the planning about what kind of use they can have for that lot. For example, maybe open up to use it as a parking lot for the, for the hotel.
You mean meantime, in the meantime?
In the meantime, yes.
September use, that, yeah, maintain the property at its highest and best use for now.
Exactly.
And then while we're waiting for the two years, I don't want to see two years with these fence are coming down halfway and there's trash everywhere. It's just not good. It doesn't look good at all.
Right.
All right, so that's all I have, Chair. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I do have a couple of questions. Have you submitted a performa to city staff to review regarding the project? Or your, your performa has only been in house with your, your development team?
The performa for the design?
Or the whole project? Because ultimately, the project is a yay or a nay based upon the project performa, which list all the expenses and potential income, and at the bottom, where that number is.
The developer is a seasoned developer. They develop, develop the shares across the street.
Right.
But I, I don't think the city asked for a performer at that time, so I don't believe the city has a review and put a performer.
Yeah. And I think, I know there's been some changes with economic development staff here at the city, but as a person who formerly worked in economic development, that's a key proponent when you're asking for something like this, because it's a big ask. And from what I understand with plan check, once you submit and pay the fee, it's going to be several months. You're talking five, six months to get everything approved, and if you have back and forth and changes, now for looking at potential design changes, then that's coming back to this body, getting approval for that. And so, as, as Commissioner Chen was saying, two years can be eaten up very quickly. So here we are. We're talking set, potential seven months from now. So instead of 24 months, you have 14 months to try to see if this is a go one way or the other. And do you have anything to tell us how we could feel comfortable extending this, knowing that you're cutting back the time of, that you have to before the deadline on this?
As far as the schedule goes? From the design team point of view, two years should be, should be okay, should be fine to, to work with the subcontractors to go over the cost issues and finalize the systems. And, and then from there, the team will start to work on the code updates, and then submit the new plans to the city for plan check. All that should be able to get done comfortably within two years' schedule.
You can agree on that?
That is, that is possible.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
And also, yeah, within these two years, we are, we'll talk with, but negotiate with some potential partner to see whether we can get new funding for this project. Yeah, the original plan, what we have in two years ago, that is, you know, developer and also get the funding from the construction mortgage or loan, but the interest in us really very high, like 85% to 9%. The other ways that lower the, the mortgage, that is, we need to get some funding from another partner. So the owner now also have some potential partners negotiating now and to see whether they can have some, the cash, you know, funding this project, so we can reduce the, the number of mortgage. This will be take like a couple months or, you know, one year to make every, everyone agreed and on the same page. So this time is will be important for us as well.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you. Any other questions? All right. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
It is time for public comment. Do we have any members of the public that would like to speak on this item?
Uh, there was a public comment submitted online, but there's no one present right now that would like to speak, so I'll read the comment.
Thank you.
Uh, the com, sorry, go ahead.
Go ahead.
Oh, so, so, you know, the comments from, uh, Wanda Chan, she's the general manager of the Sheraton, uh, San Gabriel. Comment reads as followed. Dear DRC committee members and planning director, our hotel is located on 303 East Valley Boulevard in San Gabriel. We noticed the public hearing notice regarding the 205 East Valley Boulevard project and would like to take the opportunity to share our perspective, especially since the project is located directly across from our hotel. Over the past two years, the design team behind the 205 East Valley Boulevard project has maintained open and consistent communication with us regarding their development plans. During this time, we have witnessed their unwavering commitment and thoughtful approach to the project. It is clear that both the ownership and design team have invested substantial effort and care to ensure the success of this development. We understand the financial challenges the team is currently facing in securing construction funding. Given the scale and complexity of a project of this nature, we believe it is reasonable and necessary to provide them with adequate time to resolve these issues. The city's support in this regard would demonstrate a constructive and forward-thinking approach to community development. We believe the current design proposal is both well-conceived and high, of high quality. It has potential to greatly enhance the urban landscape and make a meaningful contribution to the vibrancy and identity of San Gabriel community. In particular, we would like to highlight the following reasons this project is important to the Valley Boulevard corridor and the border, or broader area, excuse me. Environmental and aesthetic improvements, the project will significantly improve the visual and environmental quality of the area, fostering a more welcoming and cohesive community atmosphere, community vi- vitality and public safety by activating the street frontage and introducing thoughtfully designed spaces. The development will bring renewed energy to the neighborhood and support environments and public safety and livability. Revitalization of a key corridor as a longstanding business and stakeholder in the area, we have paid close attention to the development on the Valley Boulevard corridor, particularly along east side of Delmar Avenue. This project represents a critical step in revitalizing this important part of the city. Given the importance of this development, we respectfully urge the city and committee members to consider our perspective and support the project's request for a time extension. We believe this is a project that will bring long-term benefits to San Gabriel and is deserving of continued support. Thank you for your time and consideration. Warm regards, Wanda Chan, general manager, Sheraton, Los Angeles, San Gabriel. That was the only comment.
Thank you very much. So the time is now 7:02 and the time for public comment on this item is now closed and the commission will deliberate and discuss this, this project. So I'll start with Commissioner Two.
Um, yes, from my understanding, um, to make a decision to extend the development schedule, uh, it is a pretty big decision for developer and I believe the team, um, they have gone through their internal, uh, consideration to make this request, uh, based due to the current, uh, interest rate, um, environment. So I do respect that and, um, I know it's a, a, a difficult decision and a difficult request. I think, um, I'm ready to approve this request, but, um, I hope that the developer can, um, explore all the possibility and, um, be concerned, uh, be cautious about the timeline as Commissioner Chan has said, two years flew by, fly by really quick and, um, uh, internal deadline is really important to, really to, um, uh, to push the project forward. So, um, that's my thought. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Chang?
Thank you, Chair. I, it's, it's comforting to hear that the, the Sheraton ownership is also the owner of this particular property. Seeing how the Sheraton project, the, from original concept to development to current running, uh, it's, it's a successful project, no matter how we cut it. Uh, so I, I'm confident that they have the desire to make this a successful project. So, um, I tend to agree with Commissioner Two, uh, agreeing to extend the two-year extension, uh, but, but it is critical that the, the people here, the design team would carry that message back to the ownership so they understand that this may be the last chance to keep this project alive. If they miss this one, it will be very difficult. They have to start all over again and the next one, we don't know what project is going to be. So I would support today to approve the project, uh, for the two-year extension. Thank you.
Thank you. I also think that the letter from the, the comment from the Sheraton is a big boost for our consideration, um, working with, with them, your neighbor, um, something that your development team produce. So it's, it's behooves you, you know, interest on both parts. I do think that if we were to deny the extension, it would take more than two years to get another project for this site. Um, yeah, thinking you'd have to sell it and then redesign it, come up with a new concept. It would take more than two years. So looking at, taking the chance to go with the current developer, you know, the old saying, the burden in hand is better than two in the bush. Yeah, this is a project that we have discussed. It's a developer that we've worked with in the past, have a history with. It's a design that has gone through this commission and I think our modifications a couple of years ago made it a little bit more attractive on that Palm Avenue side. So it, you know, you have some reciprocal activity there with the Sheraton Hotel. So I am also, um, at this point, a little more, bit more in favor after hearing everything on to try to do the extension on this project. If we can have a motion and a second, that'd be great.
I move to approved planning case number PPD 25 dash 003, precise plan of design time extension, um, on 205 East Valley Boulevard. Per staff report, uh, extending for two years from, um, the approval tonight.
I second.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
Commissioner Two?
Yes.
Vice Chair Saylo and Commissioner Lopez are absent. Chair Romo?
Yes.
Three A's, motion passes.
Thank you very much. Thank you for your continued interest and please, the deadline, keep that in mind. Thank you.
Thank you.
So next we go to our item B, 250 West Valley Boulevard, planning case number PPD 23 dash 012, precise plan of design applicant is Jessica Kim. And so you're going to do this presentation as well?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair and members of the Design Review Commission. Uh, 250 West Valley Boulevard takes, uh, the project over to the west side of the city. The subject property is located on the south side of West Valley Boulevard. Uh, this is west of Abbott Avenue. Uh, the property is zoned commercial center within the Valley Boulevard specific plan area and, uh, neighboring properties are also zoned, uh, commercial center to the north and to the, um, east. Mixed-use corridor to the west and residential neighborhood conservation to the south. Uh, the subject property, um, is currently existing, is approximately 1.4 acres, um, in it, in size and it's currently developed with a 15,000 square foot, approximately to a story, uh, building. What is shown here is the existing site plan, uh, the existing layout, building footprint and parking area will remain in, in a relatively similar condition. The proposed, uh, project before the Design Review Commission this evening is an exterior facade remodel of the entire commercial building. Um, the slide here shows an example of the existing, um, property as it is to the left and the proposed updates, uh, to the right. Um, the proposal this evening includes updates to the finishes and to the colors. In place of the existing, um, dark tiles will be, uh, new hardy plank, uh, lap siding and also cedar vintage siding as well as new, uh, stucco in a combination of white ivory and gray. Uh, there will also be dark metal panels in a matte finish and this is proposed underneath the soffits. Uh, the colors and materials have been provided to the commission on the sample board. In addition to the, uh, color and finish updates, um, the, uh, lighting fixtures will be updated on the property as well as the landscaping. The landscaping has been reviewed by the city's landscape architect, um, and also the updates have been reviewed by the city architect. It's staff's understanding that the storefront frames will remain the same, um, but the designer is, uh, present this evening, uh, to provide more information, um, on that. Um, the proposed, uh, updates continue to be consistent with the, um, objectives of the city's general plan for the Valley Boulevard specific plan area, um, consistent with the land use goals, economic development goals and community, uh, design goals. Similar to the first project, the notice of the property was mailed to Surrounding Properties, um, and also posted on the city's website at the post office, San Gabriel Library and also at the subject property and published in the San Gabriel Sun also on May 15th of, of this year. The project was reviewed, uh, per the California Environmental Quality Act, uh, guideline section 15301 for existing facilities, um, since, uh, new construction is not proposed as part of this project. And so the recommendation before the Design Review Commission this evening is to approve planning case number PPD 23 dash 012 for an exterior remodel to the existing, uh, shopping plaza, subject to the recommended conditions. And this concludes staff's presentation.
Right. Commissioner Two, do you have any clarifying questions for staff?
Uh, yes, my question is that the, all the signage design will be a separate, uh, dis- approval package submitted to this body later, right?
That's correct. It was the intention to have it as a combined, um, presentation, but the signage details taking a little bit more time. And the property owner requested that the, um, finishes be reviewed first so that they can get in the plan check for that while they follow up with the, uh, design, the signage criteria.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Chang?
Uh, I, I just want to, um, make sure that I understand, on the landscaping part, the front portion of the landscape area, those are not on top of the garage, is it? It is on land, on gray, isn't it? I, I try to figure that out because if it's on gray, meaning that, that, that signage in the center, the island, and then the two, uh, landscape area in front of the building, if those are on, on, actually on gray, then they got some opportunity there because I, it's, it's a great project, but I'd like to see something landscaping-wise, take advantage of that and do something. As you can look at the rendering, you, you, you pretty much get back the same thing with a different color.
Yeah.
We need to do something more now.
The, the architects would have to confirm that as to where the subterranean levels terminate on the lower levels. Uh, staff, staff, uh, did not confirm that.
Okay, I'll, I'll ask them later. Okay, thank you very much. That's all I have.
Just kind of a piggyback on the landscaping. The rendering does not show anything that the landscape plan is. If, if I were to look at this, I would say no. It's, it's horrible, it's dull, but when you look at the landscape plan, it's pretty significant what they're going to be replanting, not only on Valley Boulevard, but on the side parcel as well. I mean, from the side, um, the east portion, west portion of the parcel. So I think that, that makes a difference. So I'm going to just kind of be Commissioner Lopez at this time and say, our renderings need to show what the plans, what the plans show. We need to make sure that's in the minutes for Commissioner Lopez. But I, I think it's, I appreciate, you know, that you brought it up to the commission, for our consideration. And I think it's, it's nice for the developer to come up and I'm looking forward to hearing from the developer on this project. And the developer here? Do you have any comments to help us with this project?
Hello, uh, my name is George Lynn. We decided to go with an exterior remodel, um, for this outdated plaza, um, to kind of, uh, spice up, um, the, the frontage and everything. Um, in, in regards to the landscape plans, we, we just had the revision, um, put in, that's why it wasn't, um, it wasn't shown in, in our rendering. And, and so was there a question that?
Sue, um, I think at this time, it's an opportunity for you to say basically why you're looking at doing the facelift.
Okay.
Why you like your new design and then we can ask questions of you. So right now we want to just kind of hear from you.
Sure. So the, the origin of, of this plaza was, it was a, um, it was the old movie theater, Quahog Theaters. And when we took over the property, we did a, a remodel to turn the upstairs, um, to, to create a level, to, to, um, put restaurants upstairs. So that was, I believe in 1998, 1997. And then, so throughout the years, uh, as you could see, the, the granite or the marble, um, panels were really gray and dark. And so we decided to lighten, lighten things up. We looked at different, um, different types of materials and, um, uh, with the designer who's here, an architect, to see what, what would make sense on, on Valley Boulevard. And, you know, we, we knew, we knew that Fokas Plaza was, uh, doing a remodel as well, so I think it was a good time to update our plaza, um, to bring it into the next, you know, 20, 30 years. And so the elements of, of this, um, design was, you know, was, we, we took a lot of careful thought in, in terms of, okay, should we put some wood elements, um, put some, uh, light cutter, light colored elements in, into the building design, but I, I think the designer can, or the architect can explain more.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Andrew Kill at AHK Architecture. I'm the project architect with the developer. You know, thank you for the presentation and we are in agreement with the staff report. The question of the landscape and our latest, uh, 3D rendering didn't update the landscape portion of the frontage, uh, which that, when you look at the landscape plan, we are planting five 36-inch, the box trees on the front side of it with the, the sitting area has been elaborated more. And, uh, you know, just going into the design, the, the process that, uh, we, when going through. And you know, just going into the design, the process that we've been going through. You know, looking at this, you know, early 90s building with expensive granite panels at the time. And putting that with their arch, false atrium skylight kind of look on the street side of it. And it just has a linear, long linear of the building. It looks like a train just goes monotonous look of it. And our challenge was that how are we going to break that? And that was the first challenge that we had. And we definitely doesn't want to have that arch shape of the false skylight in the front of the building. And taking that out and that gray tone of the natural stone wasn't that pleasing after 30 years. And we thought we are giving that to wing, end of the wing, some kind of post. To give the stable statement of that simple and warm tone to it. That's the reason why that we introduced white smooth stucco with wood panel. It is not actually wood panel, it simulated look of the wood panel made out of the vinyl composite. But it's, it looks more wood look than real wood. Anyhow, so we made that front portion of the two post element. And you know, nice, simple themes of it. And it just breaks automatically the rest of the shopping center behind of it. And we tried to mimic and repeat our design element of the front part of the building to the center part of the building. You know, when you look at the center part of the building, it is really sitting back from the street. But it has all kinds of shape to it. We just simply wants to have a simple shape with, you know, pleasant look of the building. Not introducing too many elements of it, just kind of a repeat what we had. And we just carry on from there. And that was the theme that we had. And we introduced metal canopy, which is the front of the, that the inner part of the shopping mall. And that dark gray color of the metal panel, we put that image of that dark charcoal gray colors of a stucco in the front of the building. So we only play with the three building materials of it. Stucco, wood panels and metal canopy, which is the accent of everything. Hopefully, our design and the direction that we are going is going to be addition to the streetscape the city has around the area. That's what I have. And I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you very much for helping explain kind of the project and why, looking at the different elements. So we're going to see if the commissioners have any questions. We'll start with Commissioner Chu.
Yes, I do have a question about the, I think the architect has emphasized that the reason you guys removed the skylight on the building. I do see these two smaller skylight in these two wings on the drawings as to be removed. But the one in the middle says to be remain, but it doesn't show on the rendering. Can you clarify that?
Well, we tried to make the center part of the atrium to remain as is. And raise up the parapet that we are proposing and to hide that portion of it. But it may still have a little silhouette to it. But that's the intent, our intention is that the leaving that center part of the atrium as is. Because it is true skylight and it's a huge structure that we just don't want to take that out. Not only for the, for the, you know, structural difficulties. But that the light coming into the space inside of it. But those two small little skylights is a false. It doesn't serve anything. It is not the skylight whatsoever. That's why we are taking out.
Okay, so I do see that on the elevation joint, you have this skylight maintained on the main atrium. But from the rendering, it looks like, I mean, from the elevation, it looks like the skylight would be like much higher than the raised parapet from the elevation joint, but I don't see it from the rendering. So I was wondering, is this rendering really truthfully representing the design? Or that is what really like, because of the perspective, you don't really see that from the street.
I would like to, so from the street view and because we have that parapet up high, you're not going to be able to see any part of the dome from the street view. That's why we didn't put it into the rendering. Because unless you're in upstairs in a building, which we don't have any buildings that are higher than, we did a street, street level view where you won't see that curvature. That's why we left it out.
And one other thing that when you look at the drawings, A1.7, the skylight, you know, atrium itself is sitting back from the parapet itself. So when we have a parapet and atrium is sitting back. And you don't really have to raise up your parapet all the way to the top of the atrium to hide it. Because of, we are about thirty some feet in height and you're in the street level. But we'll make sure, we'll make sure from the street and you don't see that center part of the arch atrium figures of it at all.
Yes, I do doubt that because when you look at the image, the one in the lower left compared to the one on the lower right. I mean, the one on the lower left is actually at a lower eye level, Google street view image. And then you see the skylight, but the other one doesn't show it. So I just wanted to make sure that the designer has checked that. This appears to be like a sketchup model. If that skylight is really in that image and you wouldn't see it. So I just wanted to make sure that it looks puzzled to me that if you see on the left, it's supposed to be seen on the right as well. Because the raised parapet doesn't seem like that tall to me. So that's my first question. And the second question is actually the, can you elaborate a little bit about the selection of the materials? To me, it seems like the original plaza has some sort of a design quality with stone cladding. That is considered like a higher end material. However, the new design, it is refreshing in a way. It's more modernized and eliminating a lot of the traditional detail on the design. However, it kind of generic in a way. You see those type of material composition all the time. I'm just afraid that the design doesn't really like, resounding the original quality of the building. So my question was, can you elaborate the idea, the thought behind like the selection of the material? Rather than this just something that's been used all the time in nowadays industrial?
Well, that was the reason why that I started with that, how we, what the design process and our thinking process was. Once we first looked at the project. This project, the existing facade look may be good for 30 years ago. But it is, even natural stone is getting old and you have all that decays coming out of the joint and all that. And with that, what we thought was that, okay, and not only that. When you look at the details of that, the existing building, all kinds of shapes and colors there. When you look at the two columns on the front side of it, it is the sky, the blue kind of two columns. That column is the round column. So that round column comes down from that, supporting that big stone facade. And with, you know, big, long, the monotonous look of the plaza, it is kind of boring. And the one thing that we tried to do was that, why don't we just break this building to three different, you know, layers? First layer, which is the, you know, that I was describing that as a post. And second layer and leaving as much that existing shape as possible. But introduce metal, the panel of the canopy to accentuate the design theme that we are trying to do. And that the last one was that the centerpiece. Centrepiece, like what I was describing before, has all kinds of shape to it. And has diagonal lines and round and all that stuff there. That we tried to just make it simple as possible. And at the same time, the selection of the material and wood stucco and accent of the metal. It will just give you more inviting to the users and tenant. And that's how we came up with the design.
I would like to chime in about the stone as well. You know, maybe when this was, when they put that stone on, they had a good idea. But in terms of maintenance, if you look closely, there's a lot of holes, right? When you, when you put the signs up and you put these nails into this hole. And then when you change tenants, there's a lot of patches on this, the stone. And there's no way to really refinish the stone. And so if you, if you really go there and look closely, there's a lot of, looks like bullet holes where the signs used to be when you changed tenants. And you know, we viewed it as, you know, there's a lot of trends back then. It might, you know, it's almost similar to looking at a kitchen, right? Kitchen remodel back then, that was the style. We believe this is the style and, you know, respectfully, I think this hasn't really been done anywhere in San Gabriel as of yet. So, you know, we believe that it's going to be a really nice facelift and refresh for, especially at Valley Corridor.
I do have one last question about the materials. So the, there's a, there's a cladding, this one in the middle. Can you point it out where this been applied to the design?
That, that one?
Latura gray color cladding by Nishida.
The gray color, gray color of the panel is on the inside of the mall that we are providing the metal canopy, that portion of the facade side of it. How I can, right there, right there, yeah. Above, above, right there, where the sign.
So that's the gray, so is the bed, oh, okay, that's the, that's the handrail?
Yeah, we couldn't really get a actual color of it because it's the, you know, custom made color.
Yeah, so we couldn't really turn the color on the, like we trying to propose because it's the custom made color. So that's why we put another paint color on the side. So that's our proposed color on that board, yeah.
So this is the proposed color on this material?
Yeah, yeah, they can make that color on that material.
Okay, all right. This one seems a little light, a lot lighter than the one on the rendering, so.
Yes.
Okay, all right. Yeah, my, that's my question. I just have comment on the, it seems like all the white color here on the, on the building facade is the smooth stucco. And I thought it might be a good idea to actually to upgrade the stucco color. Because of the stucco, I mean, for a commercial application, I mean, stucco cracks all the time. And it's been used on a majority of the elevation on the street side. So that's why I wasn't quite sure about the selection of the material. That's my question and comments. Thank you.
Would you like to address the stucco finish and cracking?
The stucco finish is a smooth finish. What they call it, the elastic, the stuff in it. So it is more of the good at expansion and that contraction sort of things of it. And at the same time, that when you look at the stucco portion of the rendering, that we have reveals there. So that reveal is going to help not crack the entire stucco that often.
Yes, I do, I do see the seams for the, for the stucco and that's really necessary. But still, even stucco contractor told me that stucco is going to crack. So that's why I was like, this is the really important facade is right at the sidewalk. And I wish it could be like a better or like a cladding material instead of stucco. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Cheng and then Ron, do you have something that you want to add now?
So about stucco, there's an acrylic stucco that has acrylic admixture, especially on smooth stucco that resolves a lot of the cracking issues. So that's like a premium stucco. And then I wanted to mention that I don't remember the round arch in the last review that I did at the back there. So I just don't remember. But when I saw it today, I noticed it, so I don't remember. And then one other thing, just in concept, I think, to me, it reads like three pavilions connected by these galleries. So I think it's a nice design in concept. It's simple with these three galleries, also these, I mean, these three pavilions. The three pavilions have stronger legs than the existing building, which has these little skinny legs that hold up this big mass. So my first reaction was I think this is a superior improvement over the old design. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Ron. Commissioner Cheng?
Yeah, I appreciate the architect's comment also. But I think the question for the architect, if Mr. Kill, can you come on up? Since you're the architect record. On 3.1, your self-elevation still shows that far end skylight. It's still there above, right in the center. Is that a true elevation depicting when the project is done? You can still see it, even though Mr. Lynn said it may be hidden. But I just don't see how that being hidden on 3.1. If you look at 3.1 top page, that is totally different from the rendering. Am I correct on that?
Yes, that we may have to go back and revisit the issues of this. We just have to get the correct height of the skylight. And my understanding was that we are trying to hide that skylight slash atrium. that we are trying to hide that skylight slash atrium with the new parapet that we are proposing.
It, it, the, the, the elevation shows at least about seven or eight feet above your parapet wall line. That's quite a bit too high, so, um, so we, we need you to work hard to take care of that piece. That, that part of it is the most prominent elevation, looking at the plaza. You drive by, you, you, you look right to the back, that, everybody sees that, so it's important to be accurate on that.
Understood.
Two, my earlier question was that, is, is the whole front end, meaning that, that Live Plaza signage, that whole piece together with the driveway and the two landscape area, are those on gray?
It is, it, it is on gray, um, it is.
Cause I tried, I couldn't find the, where the underground parking lot line is. You have a dotted line, but I don't know if that depict the correct line.
Yes, it, it is completely, uh, on gray.
Okay, so if it's on gray, that gives the landscape architect a very good opportunity to bring in some tall elements to help your plaza. You, you got the width, you got everything else, but you look at the rendering in the picture, whether it's existing or future, there isn't any element, tall elements, to help your project landscape wise.
Sure, uh, apparently that landscape architect provided five thirty-six inch box trees on the front side of it.
Well, do you know how tall they are?
In, in maturity, uh, uh, according to the landscape drawing, it is going to be twenty foot in height and fifteen foot in width.
So those information needed to be shown on your rendering and on your plan, because uh what we don't want to do is to, um, rate the project or, or approve the project with incomplete information. It's, it's gonna hurt the owner at the end, because if it cannot be done, for in, for instance, or after we approve that, you cannot hide that skylight, it's gonna be a major problem. As an architect, you know you have the obligation to be accurate.
Sure.
You need to draw your plan correctly and so that the contractor can build it correctly. So I would say that, coordinate with your landscape architect, on, on her design or his design, both on the planting material, render it correctly on the rendering and work out that big skylight in the back. If this, the owners on your intention to hide it, you need to come up with the correct architectural element to hide it. If you cannot hide it, show it how it would look at the end.
Sure.
Correctly on the rendering, because otherwise, it will be a big problem at the end, once the project is approved, we don't know what was approved, and when the planning department go over there and inspect it, they'll reject it, and you got nothing but headache, so don't do that.
Got it.
Yeah, but out, out in that, I think, I think, uh, I, I have no issue with your uh change of design from, from thirty years or forty years ago to what we see now, it's the, the building is tired, needs some help, and so it's the right thing to do. So in the big picture, I have no problem supporting it, but all this detail has not worked out. And, and, and I don't know, when you talk about this, this um smooth sand finished stucco, even though with the electromagnetic type, you still need to have some kind of, of, um, uh, parting bits to, to separate them, you need some expansion joint. So I don't know whether you have considered that, because looking at your rendering, it's just one long service. And if you're gonna be doing some, um, separation, lining those up become very critical to make the project look right at the end. So pay attention to the detail, make sure they line up not arbitrarily, don't let the contractor do it for you. You need to do it, otherwise it's gonna come out totally wrong.
Sure.
And so those are critical details to get it done right. So I, I, I think that's my comment so far, I look at it. It's beautiful project, it's gonna be a nice one if we can work out all these details.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ron, you have another?
Sorry, I, I have one more thing. You know how you said that over time, as the tendency has changed and that there's holes in the stone that have to be filled and all that, you, you probably have the same problem with the wood siding too, over time.
Nowadays, wood siding that we are proposing is a ready-made product, which, which is the vinyl composition tile. So it, it just, like a, you know, the papers that everybody makes, but that natural stone, that particularly granite of that age, when you change the one panel, then one panel color is not gonna match with the others. So we always have a problem with that granite building. That we, I, I used to do lots of granite buildings of it before.
Me too. Uh, but, but still, if you drill holes into that simulated wood siding and then you change the tenants, you're gonna see the holes, and then if you replace the siding, who knows if that siding is still made in ten years too?
So that, that's, that's the reason why that we made the, uh, the sign, uh, attachment to the panel where that is, it is supposed to be. And we just will give, uh, the tenant the size of the panel and location of the panel, whatever the name that you're putting it, it has to be A by B height and at the same, same location. I think that that's the, um, the sign, the review that you will, uh, the do the later on, because of, you wanna make sure that the assigned, signs are in the right location all the time, rather than you just move the things around by who knows when.
Right, so, so when you do submit the master sign program, that'd be something we're gonna look for.
Yes.
So Chair, I along the same line, if you're gonna be working with your sign designer soon, I would definitely bring this up to him and let him understand that if this is the intention that to eliminate all this potential wrong holes once the tenant moves out, uh, have him come up with a sign program, a master sign program, that can work with the material and without causing problem when you change tenant names. You need to come in with that design in mind to make it work.
Sure, sure.
Like, it might have an electrical raceway, that all the letters sit on top, then you just take out those letters and put in new letters, but you're not drilling more and more holes into the, the backing.
The currently you are working with the sign, uh, the provider, so has ideas that we just have to compile all the, all the ideas together and just make it just, um, one standard that everybody has to follow.
Thank you. So I, I agree with a lot of the comments that have already been made here tonight, and I think especially with that rear center atrium, it, that's pretty vital, um, to get that perspective correct and the height, uh, correct. I, I'm not an architect, so I rely on, on the great people here at the day is sitting with me. Um, I'm not a landscape architect, but I can read plans, I could count trees, and I can look, see where they're gonna be co- be placed. And one of the things that, I spent several hours looking at the landscape plan for this project, and there's some Italian cypress plans, plants, trees that are listed, but I couldn't find where they're placed. And I think that's an issue, uh, because as Chair, uh, Chair, I mean, former Chair and Commissioner Cheng was, was, was discussing is, yeah, the planners and for future people working here at City Hall, when they look at the project and they look at the plans, they need to look at those and make sure that they are implemented as submitted. So I think overall, the landscape plan is, is a huge improvement of what we see now, and it, it enlivens the project and having those, the trees on Valley Boulevard and exist in, in conjunction with the street trees that are on Valley Boulevard, you have this, this layering of trees and greenery, and it softens the building, whether it's the monochromatic gray that we see with, you know, looking years in advance, those trees should, should be able to last and add to the urban landscape. So I think that's, that's something that needs to be addressed, and I don't know if the, do you have your landscape designer here with you? No. So I think, I think the plans read well as they are without the Italian cypress, and if he's going to really, he or she is going to add those Italian cypress, then they really need to work with the city's landscape architect and make sure those are called out. So I think in addition to addressing the, the atrium issue at the center, looking at, um, the rendering and making sure that the gray is correct, um, doing additional extension joints for the stucco, so that's, that's something that needs to be worked out with the architect, um, looking at the sign program that you're gonna bring back to us and making, making that, uh, something, if you don't want to replace that board and have that material last, man, fifty years, how are your, how is your sign program going to work? So that's going to be in the future. I think when you come back in the future, when we see the sign program, I know I would like to see the current landscape plan as proposed, assuming we adopt it tonight, but I don't know at this point, how that's going to work with your signage. And, and you have talented people on your team that can know how to do these things, and I think that's, that's going to be critical, because we're going to see this project come again regarding the signs. Those are my comments. Do we have any public comment?
No public comment at this time, man.
Okay, thank you. The time is now seven fifty-one, and public comment on this item is now closed, and we're going to deliberate amongst ourselves. So Commissioner Chu, I'd like to have you start.
Yes, Chiromo, I do find the three Italian cypress here by the elevator.
So they have two different types?
There's two different type, I only find one.
Yeah, so where's this one? Where's this one?
I can find this one, only find this one.
Yeah, those are the tiny tower Italian cypress, and then you have Italian cypress, so it's this one, kinda with the starburst that.
Yeah, they're all the same size, okay, yeah, I couldn't find the other one.
Yeah.
Okay, um, yeah, I feel more comfortable to see updated rendering truly representing the, the, the remain skylight, uh, in the main podium, because that is really important element in the whole design. Um, it would be really funny to see one big skylight remain with the, with the design as proposed, so, um, I feel like, um, more comfortable to see the updated design in that regard. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Cheng?
Thank, thank you, Chair. The, the project, the intent, everything is, is all good. It just need the details to be worked out. I, I think I would recommend the design team and the ownership to start talking to the landscape architect to work out all the plant material and place them correctly and make sure the constructability is doable, meaning whatever they plan is workable. Many, it's got the root system depth, and it's in the right place, not in the parking lot, um, underground, so that need to be worked out. And then, um, the sign designer, again, work with them to work out all these signage replacement opportunities, so we don't see the building got damaged, uh, years down the road. Um, that, again, that, that centerpiece of the skylight, the, the main skylight, that round element on this new design, it's, it's a sore thumb, it doesn't quite work with it. You know, once you change the entire feel of the building with that, with the skylight the way it was designed, it looks awkward. So it's a real challenge for the architect and the ownership to come up with some design element to, you wanna keep it, hide it, hide it correctly, so it looks like part of the design. Uh, so that is a challenge there, so that, there's some work to be done. And, uh, work out the remaining details, um, make sure everything we talked about is being addressed, uh, and identified, um, on the plan, that if the actual color board is the final color, identify it, even though the rendering may not be able to show exactly how it is, or the rendering color is the final color. I think we need to make a decision either way, so that we know how the building looks like at the end of the day, when we, when we approve that. Uh, I would render those trees even with the correctly at the, at the full height when it's all full grown, and if it's twenty foot tall, show it twenty foot tall, and it's with the, with the canopy, so we know how it looks like with the correct kind of trees. I think once that in front of us, I, this project will be a slam dunk, so no problem. I think we should support it. Uh, other than that, I, I think, I think, I hope the ownership and the architect got the note and the message, and, and we'll, I'm, I'm ready to continue it at a, at a time uncertain, depends how fast they can bring it back in, and we can do it that way. Thank you.
And Ron, you, yeah.
I, I found the cypress trees that.
Yes, so, so, so did Commissioner Chu, sir. Yes, she showed me, yeah. I need better lighting, because there's slightly, a slight difference, um, so thank you, thank you both of you for, I, I'm not infallible like the Pope. Um, I don't even think they, they say they're infallible anymore. Um, I, I, I think, I, I concur with your comments, um, Commissioner Cheng, that there are some, it's, it's a good project, however, there are some slight issues that need to, to be addressed, and, um, it, it's tough, because we would like to move this along, but we don't know how it's going to come out. And I know if Commissioner Lopez would be here, you know, he, that's the only thing he's talking about, you know, what are we approving? It's not what's, what's shown, how do we know what we're approving? So I think this, in this case, it's important for us, you know, before we can approve this, to really know how the landscaping works, how the, that atrium in the back is going to be addressed, the, how many extension joints you're gonna be having and how they line up properly. And maybe you can bring the sign master program at the same time, so we know how that will all work. And it's, you're trying to do good, and we, we realize that, but I think there, there needs to be a little bit more clarity on this. So with that, is there a motion to continue to a date uncertain?
For staff, do, do, do we want to ask the applicant if they, how soon can they bring it back to the next meeting? Is it, is it possible, if you have enough time, to work out all these details and bring back with the next meeting maybe? Is it possible, or you, you don't want a set date on it?
The, the June twenty-third.
The, the sign, the, the sign company, the sign company said that, um, they, they wanna work on it after we get approval.
The, uh, because the thing is, the problem, um, they wanna have a structural, like, calculation and the structural detail for that long metal canopy thing, so like, we didn't get the approval yet, so we couldn't really develop for the, all the structural, so if we are thinking. So if we are thinking, everything looks good and we have to update a little bit, then we can move forward for the structural. So I can provide to the, like, sign company. But sign company told us, like, they need a minimum one month after they get the structural calculation. So we might need a two months total for, for the sign program.
You know what? Whether we, can we do just master sign program? This is rough outline of size. What kind of size of the sign will be fitting into the facade? And can sign company come back later with the details?
Yes, you can, you can do that. Some, most project have a sign specifically on a separate meeting, but they need to, but, but you as an architect need to talk to them what their solutions are so you can design it correctly.
Sure. So not necessarily that the font size and style of their thing is not there, but we will just show you that what is the width and height of the certain location of the sign would be.
Not even that. I think if you've come up with a, let's say, if your solution is a, a, let's say a sign box, whether it's going to be a light box or it's going to be an electrical raceway, work with them and find what the future solution may be. And so you can design your facade architecturally according to that.
Right.
And that will work.
Okay.
So they don't need to be here for the next meeting, but I think you got enough work to work out that skylight in the back.
Sure.
Because without that workout, it's going to be hard to approve it.
Sounds good. That, I, I think that we can do that much.
So I think, yeah, so for, I think when you say for the next meeting, because if we're going to continue this item, continue it to our next meeting on June 23rd, you said, or it could be continued to a date uncertain. And we don't want to put a deadline on you that you cannot make because essentially you'd have to turn things around in two weeks for staff.
Oh, oh, okay.
Yeah, it's actually two weeks turnaround, not one month. The meeting is one month, but the turn, your turnaround is two weeks.
Two, two weeks.
So i- if you cannot make that two week deadline, go for a date uncertain. Don't put, don't put these artificial, you know, this deadline that we would vote on right now.
Right.
And then you can't make that. And it's trouble for you, it's trouble for staff. We'd kind, we'd have an agenda to, you know, push it.
Sure. Understand. So can we just leave that date blank?
Yes, yes. So we can, we can have our motion to a date uncertain and then that would be up to your team to come back to us and, you know, really, really look at those issues that we talked about here. The atrium, the, the renderings with the correct gray, having the landscape plan shown appropriately, how the trees are and the plant material are going to, to accentuate your project and then looking at that stucco and, you know, the potential early thoughts on the sign program to avoid the holes. I think those are the types of things we're, we're looking at. So I think that was your motion, right?
Yes, yeah. My motion is to continue planning case number PPD 23-012, precise plan of design on 250 US Valley Boulevard to a date uncertain for the applicant to address all the discussion items mentioned earlier.
Thank you. Is there a second?
A second.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Cheng?
Yes.
Commissioner Chu?
Yes.
Vice Chair Seelow and Commissioner Lopez are absent. Chair Romo?
Yes.
Three As, motion passes for continuance.
Thank you very much and good luck addressing all of our comments. So now we go to our last public hearing item for tonight is item C 516 Angelino Avenue, planning case number SPR 20-059, site plan of review. Applicant is Vivian Nguyen. And Marlon?
Thank you. Good evening, Chair Romo and members of the Design Review Commission. The public hearing item before you tonight is for a site plan review to allow for the construction of a new two-story, single-family home located at 516 East Angelino Avenue, planning case number SPR 20-059. The subject property measures six, excuse me, 6,750 square feet and is currently developed with a 1,093 square foot, single-story, single-family home and attached garage. The proposed project includes conversion of the two, of the existing home into an accessory dwelling unit, demolition of the existing garage, the construction of a new two-story, single-family residence and a new attached garage. The project site is located on the south side of East Angelino Avenue, between Lafayette Street to the west and California Street to the east. The project site is Zoned R1 for single-family residences and has single-family homes directly to the north, south, west and east of the subject property. The project before you tonight is for a new two-story, single-family home with an attached front-facing garage. The single-family home will measure a total of 1,679 square feet with an 802 square foot ground floor and 877 square foot second floor. The application for a new single-family home was, has been reviewed by staff, the city architect and the landscape architect for completeness and consistency with the single-family residential design guidelines. Upon review, staff has found the submittal to be out of compliance with development regulations, including floor area ratio and front yard paving. Submittal materials are also incomplete, including labeling errors, missing or incorrect calculations and inconsistencies between the elevations, landscaping plans and rendering. The city architect has also found the design of the proposed home to be inconsistent with the design guidelines citing excessive paving, an incompatible tall stair tower along the front facade, a front-loading front garage and a large second-story massing. The project applicant has expressed concern over time delays and had requested their application be heard by the Design Review Commission as proposed. The proposed home is designed in a contemporary Mediterranean style per the applicant's project narrative. The home will be clad in a crystal white stucco finish with lightweight barrel tile roof, roofing in a red Casa Grande blend color. The fascia board trim and window sill will be painted in a desert wood color to contrast the white vinyl windows. The home will also include a street-facing garage with a natural brown garage door featured prominently along the front facade. The project proposes to install new landscaping on the project site. The front yard will include a majority of hardscape materials, including a curved driveway, extended by pavers throughout and a concrete walkway leading to the driveway. The portion, a portion of the front yard will also feature a new lawn with a row of purse lane along the north and east side. Along the property boundary to the east, the applicant proposes to plant a row of 34 15-gallon potacarpus trees. The western side yard will be primarily hardscape with concrete and interlocking pavers and a three-foot, four-inch-wide planter area planted with English lavender. The rear yard area behind the ADU will feature a new lawn with unidentified trees planted throughout and Mexican bush sage along the rear property line. The city architect generally, generally finds that the project as proposed lacks balance and transition. Recommendation for balance includes relocation of the attached garage to the rear to reduce or at minimum additional setback from the front plane of the home. The proposed design also lacks transition between the home and its surrounding areas. The front yard of the home features limited landscaping with a large hardscape area. The front yard also features a concrete masonry unit block wall and wrought iron fence making the area uninviting. The tower form, the tower form of the stairway and a window along the front elevation is recommended to be reduced as it is out of scale with the rest of the home. The rendering shown here is an updated version provided earlier this afternoon and has not been reviewed by staff and the city architect. Section 153.353 of the San Gabriel Municipal Code requires the submittal of a neighborhood analysis of homes within a 300-foot radius around the project site. The analysis shall identify one- and two-story homes in the neighborhood. The neighborhood analysis identifies eight properties with two singles, excuse me, two stories, single-family residences within a 300-foot radius. The project was reviewed for compliance with the California Environmental Quality Act and was determined to be exempt per Guidelines 15303, Class 3 for new construction. And on May 15th, 2025, a notice regarding the project was sent to properties within a 300-foot radius of the project site. A notice was also posted on the project site. Tonight's meeting agenda was also, was posted at City Hall, the post office and the public library and was advertised in the May 15th, 2025 edition of the San Gabriel Sun. With that, staff recommends that the Design Review Commission adopt a resolution of the Design Review Commission of the City of San Gabriel denying planning case number SPR 20-059 for a new two-story, single-family residence at 516 East Angelino Avenue. That concludes staff's presentations and I'm available for any questions.
Yeah. I think before we go to our commissioners, I would like to hear from our city architect, Ron.
Can, can you put, please, the, the new rendering? Because I didn't even see that.
This was, this was delivered earlier today. I also have a, a board to pass around.
Right. Well, thank you, Madam Chair. So I've never had a chance to review this project five times now. I'm losing my voice. So one thing is that the, the context is primarily modest, one-story homes. And then this, this home is proposed to be a, a very tall, two-story home. The design guidelines, well, there's, there's several issues with the design guidelines. One is the very flat facade with the garage forward, that the design guidelines want the garage to be diminished and either located in the rear of the property or substantially setback from the front plane of the house, which this does not. Next is the scale of the house. This has a very tall, two-story stair tower that I think is inconsistent with the neighborhood context. And I should mention, there are some two-story homes and there are some homes with front garages, but they were built under much earlier standards and guidelines. So they, they, those houses would not comply today. So this house, I think, does not comply today. The, the rendering is stronger than the rendering that I had seen before. There's more detail in particular around that front window. But you can see that this very tall, flat facade is out of scale with the ones, primarily one-story context. And so that, those are my, my most strong concerns.
Thank you very much, Ron. Commissioner Chu, do you have any questions for staff?
Yes, I have a clarifying question about the, the staff mentioned that the, the project is not in compliance with the FAR.
That's correct.
So the, the report says that it's 2,375 square foot of livable space, but on the drawing it indicated 2,175. What is that? It's just a discrepancy between the drawing and the report. I wanted to understand that.
Yeah, that's one of the miscalculations that were mentioned. I believe those calculations do not include the excess area of the ADU that exceeds the 800 square foot exemption for, for the ADU.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. This floor area ratio calculation is also the floor area for, for the entire property. The square footage of the home itself is in compliance, but overall the site is out of compliance.
Okay, got you. Thank you.
Commissioner Cheng?
I guess echoing on what city architects comment was that, I think both floor had nine foot, one inch to play height, which I think kind of expands the overall height of the building, especially the front tower. So we'll, we'll ask the designer whether they, their thought on that. So that's, that's kind of hurting the project a little bit. So that's all I have. I don't, staff, I think we ask the applicant.
Okay. I do have a question for, for staff. Yeah, I, I see this, this project as proposed and we're looking at that ground floor front elevation. And is there a requirement for any natural light on the ground floor? Because it seems that the only lighting you'd get would be from indirect from that tower element window. Is there a standard for, for windows on that lower facade?
There are building code requirements for lighting and ventilation. Unfortunately, I, I'm not as familiar. Ron may be better versed in, in what those requirements actually are.
Not exactly, but the design guidelines discourage having flat blank walls. So, so that big wall below that big window is a discouraged item.
Okay. Thank you. And I, I just want to concur with what you had said earlier. I know that the projects that are shown within the radius were done before. It was a requirement for single-family homes to go to the design commission. And I think looking at those homes and some of the homes in neighboring cities, how the mansionization has really disrupted neighborhoods? I, I think that's a, a better way to put it. And that's one of the reasons why this project cannot be consistent. And I just want to, for the record, is that your understanding for both Marlon and for, for Ron?
Yeah. In looking at, unfortunately I don't have exact dates, but in looking at permit issuance dates of, of these homes, they do predate the mansionization ordinance that was done, I believe, in 2018 or 19.
Yeah. Thank you. Those are my only comments as the applicant here.
The applicant is present, yes.
If the applicant can come forward so we can talk to you and you can talk, tell us about this project.
Hi, good evening. My name is Wu Nguyen. I am the owner of the property. I just have a few words to say. This project started since 2020, before the COVID. And we've been, the city been asking us to do a correction. And we keep doing that and it's keep coming back with a new comment. And the reason is just every time we submit correction, every come, the new issue come up and we, I just don't understand why the project take more, almost more than four year. So I just, you know, I just built a house just for my family to live in and afford, and just affordability. But now everything is so high, the last four year, everything increased. So I just wondering why it takes so long to get approved?
Okay. So at this time, I think we're going to ask you some questions because we cannot answer that question directly to you because you're coming for an approval from this body with the plans that you have submitted. So Commissioner Chu, do you have some questions?
I think one of the, the issue here, the not in compliance is actually the square footage. And I think the planner has states very clearly that because the, the converted ADU also needs to be counted as the whole project. So is 200 square foot over the limit? Would you consider to reduce the size of the house as proposed to be in compliance?
Let me, can I have my architecture?
Yes. We already reduced the, the, the ADU, where the proposed is, the existing unit. We already had 800. We cut the backside of it to reduce that, that issue. And then we added the main house, which it's the two-story what you see. And the style of it, I mean, we're going to Mediterranean. And the way he was saying, because next neighbor, like the next to the right, it's actually, is not even a Mediterranean or Spanish style, if that's what we're trying to look at. And the issue is, when we came up with that design, we try, try our best to make sure we don't have a flat square or either a certain type. We tried to maintain the Mediterranean style. That's what we have. And as far as this, what you see, the square footage, the issue we have is, because we have too many planning at the beginning, we had two people that gave us advice and the last one, it's a different one again. So we're going back and forth. So we're trying our best to get it to the accurate number, but we're still adjusting. So that's why he was saying that it's taken about four years, five years.
So as far as So, as far as, I understood that the current ADU is still 990 square foot as proposed, right?
Correct, and then we changed it.
So, that is exceeding the, the total allowable living area for the entire project, is that right? Or you have reduced it to meet the requirement?
We, we followed the comment, we reduced it. I mean, as far as the current drawing, you would see, we actually demolished the backside. That's eating up the square footage.
So, the, the drawing proposed 990 square foot is right?
It's less than that.
It's less than that?
Yeah.
So, it's inconsistent with what you're proposing, right? The drawing says 990 on the side print.
The area calculations show 1,000.
Okay, so, so the area calculation showing 1,000, so is what the planner state that is 200 exceeding the allowable? And your print shows 990 on the, on the side print? Oh, it's not a side print, it's actually a landscape print.
It's 1,000. We, the existing is.
Okay, yeah.
Where's the existing?
These are your calculations. You're showing 1,000, the ADU will be 1,000.
Oh, we, we changed that already. Maybe we didn't give them the current, current one?
Okay, I want to confirm that. So, the set of drawing we're looking at, is that 990 or is 800?
It's supposed to be 800, to, to make it 800 even. Because we had an extra square footage. I think that was a storage or a, what's the backside?
It's a storage.
Storage, right?
It's not even a garage, it's just a storage.
It was built like that. So, we have to clean it out to make it like a decent size of an ADU.
Okay, so you have the, in your drawing, A-7?
Yeah.
That is a existing floor plan with the bathroom in the back? And the proposed ADU floor plan, you actually removed that bathroom, pushed the wall back, and relocate the bathroom actually to the original laundry area, so that you actually reduce the area? Is that what you're claiming?
Correct, correct. We're trying to get rid of that bathroom, and then we're getting rid of the laundry area.
So, you create a stackable laundry?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, so that's how you meet the square footage requirement?
We're trying to meet the square footage issue.
Okay. Another question I have is that, how do you think the garage would work when you're backing up from the garage? So, the, the design of the garage and the front yard paving, as far as I heard from the planner, that is over paving? And my concern is actually how backing out from the garage would work?
I mean, you still have a turnaround. If you go forward, and then you can still reverse, and then go, go out from the main entrance.
So, you're saying you're backing out towards the, the main entrance of the house?
Yes.
And then, you, you turn around?
Yeah, because before, I guess the garage is close to the ADU, the detached ADU, that proposed ADU, and it goes straight. But now, we're trying to post in the front, and then, once you go in, you can do a reverse, and then get out.
Oh, so you're talking about the parking for the ADU, right? I was asking about the main house.
No, no, I'm talking about the, the, the main house. We still have enough to back out.
So, you have indicated about 12 foot six from the garage to the edge of the, of the paving before the curve start? It's, I mean, it's hard to turn around from like parking design standard.
I mean, the way, the way it's created, the landscape person did this, is thinking like, if you go straight, you still have enough to even, to turn, turn around to get out. Because there's no way that you can open to the middle of the, the.
Speak to the mic, please.
Oh, sorry, sorry. Yeah, so, I mean, this, this plant itself, I mean, we saw it in another neighborhood. So, that's why the garage is facing in the front, not all the way to the side or anything.
Yes, there's no problem of garage facing to the front, that's really commonly done. The question was, the design of the, the approach and the, and the paving area, how do you accommodate backing out the car from the garage?
I mean, looking at the, the front, once you go in, you can do a, a reversed to the, coming out to the right neighborhood, and then coming out from the driveway. Or you can just come out of it.
Okay, yeah, I mean, I guess you can do that.
Yeah, you can do a backup. You have enough.
So, so is that the purpose to leaving the, the big setback on the side so that you can actually drive into the, the back of the property for the ADU parking?
Yes, we're trying to give them at, at least one parking.
So, the, the side setback is 10 feet for the, the car, the drive-through, right?
Yes.
Okay. That's why the, the, the house is seems pretty narrow in comparison with like a 50-foot lot like house, and that's why the proportion of the design, it needs to be adjusted according to what city architect was saying, that the proportion is a bit off. Because of the house itself is narrower, and you have a really tall element for the, for the staircase. And that's why I think city architect has a sketch here showing how to reduce the height of the, the staircase, that tower, to help to improve the proportion of the design. And also, I believe the, the staircase window is oversized. The rendering submitted tonight is definitely an improvement from the previous design, that's the, the scale of the window has been reduced, and proportionally looks much better than the big, large window proposed previously. Another discrepancy I would like to bring up is also the color of the window. In the material board, it says it's.
Are you talking about the trim?
Vinyl window?
Yes, we're trying to use the vinyl and the foam trim.
So, the, the, so it's a white color vinyl window?
Uh, what did you?
Or you have the, the wood color frame as you show on the elevation?
Well, we want it white. I think the render person did the brown, just to make it pop out. I think that's what his intention is, just to make it, seems like the frame around it, just to pop it out.
So, you do have a frame design surrounding the window?
Correct, correct.
So, in the, in this rendering, this is the most updated rendering, right?
Yes.
So, it looks like it's a, a white window only?
Uh, where's the board? I think the board is the most.
It's a frame surrounding, okay, yeah, can see it from here. Okay, so you do have the, the brown color detail?
The brown detail, okay.
Window detail surrounding the white vinyl window?
Yes, correct, correct.
Do you have that shown on your drawing? Like, do you have that detail drawn somewhere?
You're talking about the, the detail of the window trim? It's actually on nine or 9D1? We have the jam right here, and then we, and then we have the sill next to it.
Brown color over building paper, over fashion paper. So, there's this four-inch?
Yes, the four-inch trim.
So, that's the brown color frame?
Yeah, I think that's, that's what we're pointing at right now. I guess we changed before, it's the vinyl. And I guess the, the render, we tried to get it as close as the, the trim, which is the four-inch trim. And there's a sill next to it, the foam trim sill.
Yeah, because I, I seen different things on the drawing, on elevation. For example, it shows is a, a brown color window with a brown color trim. And on the, on the render, it shows this white vinyl window with a brown trim, and also, the door is brown color. So, there's different elements and, yes, yeah, also, the, the tower design is also different from the, from the rendering.
The most current one we have is that one right there, the board? Yeah.
So, the, there's a rendering on the package?
Are you talking, wait, excuse me, the, the, the window brown you're talking about is not the window, window itself? You're talking about the trim, right?
Yeah, the trim and the window, because I see two different designs here.
Yeah, that's a brown, correct. The window, it's, I think, the window is not brown, it's clear. But I, I don't know if you're pointing the exact last, or are you?
So, the, I mean, from this rendering, you have the white vinyl window frame?
That's an old one.
Yeah, so this is the one we received.
No, you need the new one, the updated one.
But this one, we just saw it in this meeting, and it's different from the elevation drawing in the same package you submit. The elevation drawing showing is a, a wood color window frame. So, the whole thing is wood color. So, that's the discrepancy I was talking about.
Oh, I see, I see, okay.
And also, the, the tower design?
Yeah.
The roof of the tower design is also different from the elevation. So, in the elevation, you see the gable, and you see the van in front, and this one?
But looking at the 3D, what you have?
Yeah, the 3D is, is not.
It's not the same 3D as that one. I think that 3D right there, what you have, it's been, I guess, it's been how many years already? Because we changed that, 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 the 3D itself already. So, it doesn't look, see, there's more trims into it? Maybe that, that's the confusion.
Yeah, this, this why we wanted to clarify.
Yeah.
What we are looking at is exactly what you're proposing.
The old one, the new one we have is whatever up there on the, on the screen.
Let me, let me just say, say one thing. When did you submit the new one?
This one was submitted about, just currently today.
Today, okay.
But we had already.
So, there, there's the issue, because current today is different than submitting the plan. So, you heard for the other application? That they needed two weeks in order to prepare?
I know, but the sudden timeframe that we had, because we wanted to get it as early, but all of a sudden, we had to move it now, current, right? So, that's why we didn't have enough time to actually render that, that current, current one. We just got it done this weekend. But that's an old one, the one you guys have.
So, I, I think we can go back on all of these little things, but I think at the bottom is we cannot, I'm going to be Commissioner Lopez, we cannot approve something that we barely got today. That staff barely got today. There's no, no, no analysis that staff has.
Because we didn't have enough time.
On, on the plans that you submitted today. And to work on something for this body over the weekend without analysis, because this is the first workday for, for City Hall. We can keep on talking about little things, and you're going to be saying, but that's not the new plan. But we don't have the information to, to analyze that new plan. So, I'm going to look to my commissioners and say, do we want to keep on discussing this project tonight, knowing that we don't have the correct analysis on it? And knowing that even though it's better, it's not what was recommended by our city architect?
Chair, if I may, just look at a more holistic issue on this project. Starting with the, the owner saying that it's been four years. It doesn't take four years to, to the last weekend and say, well, I just did it done today. It's not four years. So, I think, are you the designer from Studio MC?
Yes, correct.
All right. You as a designer has the obligation to understand what the city design guideline is. Have you read through the design guideline?
I mean, I read it, and I also followed it based on the first person that I spoke to. There was a first, the, the planning person that we dealt with, and we went through them so many times. And he didn't really exactly, like, okay, we need to get this thing the way you guys wanted it. And then, after we got the second one, which is, and that's where we started to update it more.
Okay, so you've been doing different generations of plan?
Correct.
And try to quote-unquote improve it?
We're losing where we need to be. You know, we started with the first one, but the, the first one didn't even give us a good advice. So, we've been jumping.
Good or bad is your judgment.
Yeah.
Anyway, if you don't get it to this body, get it approved, it's not good anyway. You won't get your permit until it's been approved. I hope you understand that.
I understand that.
So, moving forward, we want plans that are accurate. We want you to understand what you're designing. I want you to listen to the city architect and the planner on their comments, because we talk about footage. If the footage is not accurate, then it will not be approved. If the backup space doesn't work out on parking, it will not be approved. If your landscape percentage does not meet the planning code, it will not be approved. If the building height is too tall in proportioning, it will not be approved. So, there are many things that could cause a project not approvable. So, it could be four years, could be five years, or six years. If the final design is not right coming in, it will not be approved. That's our obligation to the city of San Gabriel, because your neighbor had to live with that house for 50 to 100 years. So, with that understanding, I sympathize the fact that the owner wanted to get it built. You are entitled legally to build your home to live, not a problem. But you still got to follow those deadlines, follow those guidelines, and get it done correctly. So, based on what we just talked about, your rendering doesn't reflect what is on the plan accurately. All I can gather is that you're using a white vinyl window, but with a brown colored trim, and the trim is what material, wood or is it stucco?
Foam, foam trim.
Huh?
Foam trim.
Foam trim?
Correct.
So, you're acting, adding foam around? So you're acting, adding foam around the window to create that brownish color.
Correct.
Right? So your plan should reflect that, because it's not what is said there. And also, you heard the city architect had mentioned about your, your stair tower is way too tall. I mentioned a little earlier, asking planner about why do you want a nine foot ceiling, a nine foot one ceiling to plate height on both floors? That alone is already 20 feet right there. It's nine and nine plus one foot of framing and the ceiling joints, you already 20 feet in the air. A home of this size should probably work with an eight foot ceiling rather than a nine foot ceiling. Have you considered that to make it a little bit more workable?
Well, because the thing is, if you do eight foot, it's, it's not as viewable as, like, the house is a square. And we wanted to make it taller so it looks more spacious. That's what I mean, spacious. And right now, if it's eight foot, it looks like it's a little low, even though it's a foot difference. But you can still feel that the house is low.
Your lot is 50 by 135. You already got two structure in there. It's already by, by density and by volume, you max out everything to the maximum. And you still want spacious. You don't have enough room to be a spacious mansion. That's why this design guideline was established years ago by the city and city council to not to allow people to go to the maximum and more. And it's causing problem for your neighbors. I hope you understand that. So if you read the design guideline, it's totally against what you said. You want to be spacious, you want to be at the maximum, you want, you want no landscaping. It's not what the city wants, because if everybody does that, the quality of life would diminish in the city. Everybody has their own responsibility to not just do your own home, but to take care of the neighborhood also. If your neighbor doing the same thing to you, you wouldn't like it either. So enough said. I, I'm not prepared to, to act on this, because I don't think it's ready. I think it's important that you work with the city architect and do not submit anything that happened four years ago and mix in with destroying, because I have a problem finding out what is now, what is before, what is three years ago, what is four years ago. I don't know. And they all clashing, the information is not accurate. So not until you get it all cleaned up, get the correct latest information that you wanted it with the correct color and the method of construction and the correct footage. Each floor plan should reflect the footage accurately. And so that way, planning will not be adding it incorrectly. So if you meet all the requirement from your first page, your footage is right, your percentage is right, the area percentage of landscaping is right, it'll be easy for them to look at, easy for the landscape architect and the city architect to look at it and say, well, we meet the intent of the design review guideline. So I am trying to help you to get your project approved. But arguing and because I want that is not going to get it. It's just unfortunate. Okay? Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Ron?
Madam Chair, thank you. So just a few things I want to point out. If you look at the ADU, proposed ADU floor plan, it's about just a half inch less than 22 feet wide and a half inch less than 45 feet two inches. If you just do the simple math, that's 990 square feet. So that's greater than the 800 feet that you're claiming. So check that. Also, I, I want to read just some of the previous comments that I've, I've written here. The first submittal, I said, the submittal is incomplete and there's several important design issues that must be studied. The existing El Barrio neighborhood is characterized by one-story homes of modest character. There are few two-story homes built during previous application periods, many of which would not comply with the city current design guidelines. Proposed projects should support the character of the neighborhood, not weaken it. The applicant should review the current design guidelines for single-family homes and then skipping down under the city guidelines balance from the design guidelines. A house should not create an imbalance when viewed from other houses on the block. This is why the DRC will want a rendering view that shows adjacent homes that we still don't have on today's rendering. The frontal two-story plane is not in compliance with the design guidelines will require redesign. And this goes on and on and on, point by point. So with each successive submittal, there's been maybe a little bit of improvement, but largely ignored all the other comments. So that's why it takes a long time and it takes between when you make a submittal, you get the comments and it takes a long time to, to resubmit. So, you know, it, it, a lot of it has to do with following the rules. And if you follow the rules, if you follow the rules, you'd, you'd be able to get this passed quickly. But if you don't, it's a process that just goes on and on and on and on. That's all. Thank you.
I'd like to add that with the two other public hearings we've had tonight, we had issues with the rendering not depicting what was in the plans. And your team worked on this rendering over the weekend. But it doesn't show the landscaping as what's in the landscape plan here. So in addition to not showing the house's next door, on one side, you have a two-story house, on the other side, it's not a two-story house. So when we look at how windows are placed and how that all works, we don't have the information to do that. Your landscaping is not shown in your newest rendering. And in addition, you have a tree that's being used as a hedge, the long-leaf yellowwood tree. And you have a whole bunch of those used as a hedge. In your plan, it shows the water use as moderate. However, as per Cal Poly Pomona, they have selected tree information. Those trees use a lot of water. And you have multiple of those trees that are being used as a hedge. So I don't think even your landscape plan meets the water-wise requirement that the city has. So, you know, you have to look at, are your plant materials drought tolerant? And if some, if reference material says that it needs a lot of water, it's not drought tolerant. And then you have to show what you're proposing in your plans on your rendering, so then we can analyze it. And that was a problem with the case just before you. So it's not like we're treating you any different than we have treated anyone else that has come before this body tonight. So we want to be respectful of you and your time. And if you want to move forward with this, then you need to, to do things as Ron was saying. Follow the code and if you have questions on how to follow the code, then ask staff, ask the architect and then implement those in your plan. But if you are inflexible and you're not meeting the code, then it's going to be just butting heads. And I don't think you want that. You ultimately want to build an ADU and the main house. So how do you do that? You can't just say it's been five years. You have to say, what do I need to do to build this? And we're here to help you get there. We're not here just to say no. I think right now, we have to see if we have any public comment on this before we, we can vote one way or the other. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to just? Okay, thank you.
So no public comment at this time, Madam Chair.
All right, thank you. It is now 8:49 and the public comment on this project is now closed. And it's up to us to deliberate and make a motion on how to proceed. Commissioner Chang?
Yes, I, I think the, the square footage problem is really small problem, because it's only 12 foot difference. And if you adjust the floor plan by a few inches here and there, you would be able to meet that requirement. So I don't see why it has to be back and forth in that regard.
Change. That's what you're telling me, just only maybe tweak it out a little bit, just to work it out.
Yes, I mean, that's the main thing that, I mean, if it doesn't meet the FAR, no matter how nice your design is, we cannot approve it. That's the problem, right? So it's just 12 square foot difference. And I believe you can work it out one way or the other on architectural plan to get that 12 foot out from the proposed design. And that would help you to, to be in compliance. So that is the first thing I would like to point out. And I believe Ron has given really clear feedback about the project submitted and then the, the comments. And I, I personally don't see a major problem following through it, such as putting the neighboring house in your drawing, in your rendering, so that we can actually see it in context. That is one of the major element we take into consideration in this body is the context. How do you respond to the, the neighbor you are in? And, and then the whole messing, how do they play out? So I believe you also, like, reduce the height of the tower. And that is an improvement, but apparently there's more inconsistency in the, the design drawing, which you claim that there's no time to, to put together. I believe you do need to go back and then picking up all those inconsistencies. And so that can present a complete set to this body again. So I think that's what I was trying to address. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Chang?
You're saying that the owner kept coming back and wanted to get this thing approved. I don't think they want a denial. But I think it's forced to continue. I think we need to have the applicant and the designer understand that what they, what they, what the project lack of. I think we got, we already spoke enough about what needs to be done. And I hope the, they took it to heart and work, try to work it out with the architect and the landscape architect to bring in a project that is successful and approvable. So I can only support a continuance on this project.
Thank you very much. I would also support a continuance on this project. And I, I think, I'd just like to bring up the element of the blank walls on the ground level facing the street. At our last meeting, Commissioner Chang had talked about going to a walkability conference. And when there are no windows on the ground floor, that is something that is reciprocal, where, you know, your neighbors, you know, can't keep a good eye on what's going on. You know, if there's anyone breaking into your house, if there's, you know, you go on vacation and, you know, something happens on the ground floor, your neighbors can't see out. You can't see out to your neighborhood. The walkability having windows on the ground floor, if you're walking or driving through and you have a light inside your house, that light radiates to the outside and helps illuminate the neighborhood and that walkway. So right now, you don't have any windows on the ground floor. And that's really important to me as a commissioner. And it's something on the, on our design guidelines. So you have to look at those things and those comments and how are you going to make that happen? And I think in this case, even if you have a garage door with windows on it and the windows on the upper level of the garage door have some light, that's not going to cut it, because you don't have a clear view. These neighborhoods are older neighborhoods. My house was built in the 1930s. The San Gabriel Mission was built in the late 1700s. And this is an established area. I think we're open to the type of design style. You don't have to do Spanish colonial, Mediterranean. We're not married to those types of, of, of things. But when we're looking at things, as Ron was saying, and in the staff report, if you read the staff report carefully, looking at rhythm and balance and really implementing those design guidelines in the modest home you're trying to build. You're not trying to build the Taj Mahal here. And we're here to help you, once again, along with staff is trying to help you. Ron is trying to help you get to the point where you can move forward with this project.
One more question for you guys. On your site plan, you have a dimension that says need to be 20 foot max, which I assume is the driveway. But clearly, the driveway is way bigger than 20 feet max. So I don't even know why you have this need to be 20 foot max.
That was given to us to indicate that the 20 feet.
Well, but you, you have, you're way in excess of 20 feet, so it doesn't make even sense.
I think it's important for you to understand whatever note you put in, what that really means. You're telling the contractor, or you're telling the owner, or you're telling the city. Because it doesn't make any sense now. You got a full front yard, you have maximum 20 foot. Is that a turnaround space for your car? We need, you need to, whatever note you put on the drawing, as a, as a designer, you have the obligation to the owner to put down the right note. Don't just try to put something in and hope it slides through, because eventually it's going to have problem on the design selection later, or the contractor is going to follow that and make a mistake. And it's going to cost owner a lot of money to correct in the field. So you, you need to understand that. If it's something you're not sure, find out before you put it down, because you don't know what it means. If three architects don't understand what that means, and obviously you don't, what does that mean? It only makes things worse. You follow that logic?
I understand.
Okay, so with that said, only understand what needs to be in the drawing. Do it correctly and do it right. We got projects done a lot sooner than this. Since the pandemic, we were here every month, never stopped one month. So we're here. But why your project takes four years? Others can get it done within six months. Because people listen and they do it right. So please, take it to heart and try to do the right thing. It, it help yourself, it help the owner, help the city too.
So at this time, I believe we have a motion?
I'll, I'll follow me make a motion. I, I move to continue design case number SPR 20 dash 059, site plan review, located in 516 East Angelino Avenue. Due date uncertain. And I wish the applicant and the owner will listen to the discussion carefully and try to work with the city architect and the city landscape architect and planning department staff to bring in a project that is within the design guideline that make it approvable.
Thank you. Is there a second?
A second.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Chang? Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
Commissioner Chu?
Yes.
Commissioner Lopez and Vice Chair Saylow are absent. Chair Romo?
Yes.
Three As, motion passes for continuance.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So comments from the planning manager?
Uh, no comments, Chair.
Okay. Um, just any, Commissioner Chu, would you, do you have any comments or reports you'd like to discuss?
Oh, no, I don't have. Thank you.
Commissioner Chang?
No, no.
Okay. Um, I actually have one, one item here. Earlier this year, we talked about the public art at the one, which is at the northeast corner of Valle and Del Mar. And, you know, we had talked to them about the need to have public art and not signage like they had during the holiday period. Unfortunately, today, when I drove by that project, they did not have public art and they had text saying the one, which is just advertising, you know, rebranding of their project. So, um, I think if their thought is not to have public art, then they should pay that money into the city fee. But if it is to have public art, then they should abide by what they, they honored and what they stated here in front of us just a few weeks ago, I, months ago. It's not even years. It's, it happened after Christmas, either like in February or, you know, March-ish, maybe January. But that's worn me. You know? And for them to do something like that, that's not respectful of what they promised they would do and implement. And public art is a requirement. And you either pay the fee or you implement. And I don't know if it's with the managing partner. But if that's going to be an issue with the managing partner, then that needs to be stated because they talked about a rotating public art program. And this is not public art. Thank you. So now we go to the last thing we need to do, which is adjourn this meeting to our regular meeting, the Design Review Commission on Monday, June 23rd, 6:30 PM at City Hall. 425 South Mission Drive, second floor, Council Chambers. Thank you very much.